Good evening.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome you to the regular session, uh, meeting of the Board of Public Utilities. And we would like to welcome all that are here in the room with us this evening and also uh, listening and or viewing via technology this evening. Uh, we do have a, as always, we have a public comment section on the agenda. Uh, community members who wish to speak to the board, please provide your name, address, there will be five minutes to speak. Um, if you are here in the room and you would like to speak, uh, please do sign up on the signup sheet that's up front. Over by, uh, Chris. And if you are attending via Zoom and you would like to address the board this evening, uh, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. And you may use that to utilize your five minutes during the public comment section. If you are connected by phone only, please press star nine to indicate that you wish to speak to the board uh, during that same public comment section. Uh, comments, as always, are limited to five minutes and they should be directed to the board only. Um, as these comments are public, we do caution any visitors uh, to not disclose confidential account information or to disclose account information on an account that is not in their name. Uh, staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting for the same reasons. Um, as always, the public may call or email, uh, the BPU with any concerns. The agenda this evening and the presentations may be found on the BPU website. And if you are attending via Zoom tonight, they will appear on your screen. My name is Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, position number three, and I am the current board president. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, who's the general manager. David Haley, member at large, position two. Tom Groneman, second district and board vice president. Bob Mylan, first district and board secretary. Jeff Bryant, third district. Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position number one. And our deputy chief counsel. I'm not sure if that's your title tonight or not, but Angela Lawson. Uh, I please remind everybody, please put your phones on silent before, uh, we begin the actual meeting tonight. And please be aware that there are microphones situated throughout the room. They are extremely sensitive and they will can and will pick up and record any comments that you make. Uh, before we begin the meeting tonight, uh, I'd ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, whose stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angela, may I get roll call, please?
Roll call Haley.
Present.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, before I ask for approval of tonight's agenda, I will ask if there are any, uh, comments, suggested revisions, et cetera.
This is Jeff, uh, Madam President, the item seven, number four or number three economic development fund request should be requests because there's two of them. With that change, I would, uh, motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the revised agenda for this evening. Do I have a second?
A second.
Uh, having a motion here, it's been seconded. May I get a roll call, please?
Roll call Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Perfect. Uh, before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of May seventeen, twenty twenty-three, I will ask if there are any comments, suggested revisions, et cetera.
Move to approve the minutes of, um, May seventeenth.
Mr. Jeff, I second.
Uh, we've got a, uh, motion and a second to approve the minutes of the work session of May seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Roll call Haley.
Aye.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, before I ask for approval of the minutes of the regular session of May seventeen, twenty twenty-three, I will ask if there are any comments, suggested revisions, et cetera.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular session of May seventeen.
This is Jeff.
This is Tom. I second.
Let Tom have it.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call Haley.
Aye.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, do have one person signed up to speak here tonight. That's in person. I'd ask Ryan McCarron uh, to come up and if I have mispronounced your name, I apologize. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, sure. Uh, hi, my name is, uh, Ryan, Ryan or Ryan McCarron. Both work for me. Thank you. Cleaner Now, I'm at thirty-seven thirty Metropolitan Avenue. Uh, good evening, everyone. I sent out an email today on behalf of my organization to all the board members and I just wanted to read it in front of everyone here just to so that we can put it on the record for everyone. Uh, and I am speaking on behalf of my organization, on behalf of my directors to the board members of BPU. Cleaner Now is a community-led organization that creates systemic change in existing policies and practices to protect health and dismantle environmental racism that perpetuates the unequal distribution of environmental hazards in fence line communities. As this summer season begins and with the ongoing consequences of the COVID nineteen pandemic, we are writing this letter, uh, to urge the adoption of a new disconnection moratorium for the summer for the communities and residents of Wyandotte County as we, until the month of September, at which time we can reevaluate the steps that BPU has been taking to correct the harms and the financial burdens that our community faces. As you all know, many in our community is facing hardships and still dealing with the economic effects of the last three years uh, in terms of economic and health upheavals. And these upheavals have hit the disadvantaged communities the hardest. To facilitate and to allow for this disconnection moratorium can provide immense relief for those who need it the most without affecting operation costs, the operating costs of your utility as further solutions are being explored. We are aware and we have been eagerly following your efforts to set up the community engagement workforce that can further bring the voices of the community to you and to explore the issues that have been plaguing our county for years as the work group is still being assembled currently and, uh, it is another reason that we can issue this moratorium and afford more time to assess community needs and identify equitable solutions to the energy burdens. And in my email to you all, I have attached a report we wrote about equity and energy and it is about average Kansas, but I think the same principles can apply for BPU in Wyandotte County. And furthermore, I am, we are reiterating the need and we are acknowledging the steps that you have initiated so far in addressing the bundling of the utility bills with the pilot program of the unified government as well as other services. As this issue continues to be worked on and the process takes its time, many of our community members can still not afford to pay their utilities and they cannot afford to wait and would benefit greatly from this moratorium. Uh, BPU can and should avoid the disconnection of its members. Solutions to recuperate lost costs and to assist community members exist and are awaiting your full engagement to identify and acquire federal funds, not simply for bill payment assistance, but for the continued diversification of our energy sources, your energy sources in order to achieve a hundred percent renewable energy that isn't dependent anymore on the market of fossil fuels and the whims of fossil fuel prices. As the board continues its work to remedy the injustices faced on a daily basis by its community members, we believe it is a matter of social responsibility and environmental justice that this disconnection moratorium be issued as soon as possible and that the burden be lifted from our community members and be placed on BPU to kick, to quickly and equitably identify the remedies available. Respectfully from Beto Martinez, Atenas Mena and myself, Ryan McCarron and Cleaner Now. Thank you. And I do have copies printed out. I can just leave them with Mr. Johnson here because I couldn't find your email. Sorry about that. So.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. McCarron, I, I've got a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, first of all, thank you for the communication, uh, from Clean Air Now. We appreciate that. Um, we actually appreciate the feedback on a lot of the initiatives we have ongoing. So thank you for, um, crediting um, the BPU for, for addressing some of these things. But, you know, one thing I have to ask is, um, does, has Clean Air Now, have you all sent, uh, this same communication to the unified government?
I have not. My email to you today was like a few hours ago and we, I am joining the task force for the unified government as a listener. They are working on a sustainability and green task force.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I was gonna share that with them. And if you think that it would benefit that I send this same communication to the unified government, I can do it as soon as this meeting is done and have it set up.
Well, and, and the reason I'm asking is because you've acknowledged that there are a number of items on the BPU bill that the B, that BPU is not responsible for.
Yes.
Unified government, they are unified government charges, um, for services that our residents receive, right? And, um, you acknowledge the efforts to try to separate some of this. Um, and, you know, I think that, um, to ask the BPU for a disconnect moratorium, I think, uh, for me, it would be equally fair to ask the unified government for a disconnect moratorium as well. Um, uh, you know, it, it's not, uh, this board's, um, this board did not create the, the joint bill and, um, it, it's something we administer on behalf of the unified government, right? And so while I appreciate that your organization coming to this board and asking for the disconnect moratorium, I think you should equally address the unified government commissioners and the mayor and ask the same thing.
Definitely. We can do that for sure. Uh, as I said, I sent it out today and I came to you this evening because we thought this would be our first stop and to bring it to the attention of everyone. And yeah, definitely I can follow up with, I'll send it to everyone in the unified government if I have to, but this is something we believe can benefit everyone for the next few months because, uh, I think last, was it three weeks ago now when you finalized the details of the, uh, community engagement group? And I think you had a work session today at three PM to integrate it for five.
Five, sorry, five.
Uh, to integrate the new rules into the board of directors, rules and regulations relating to that, or was it something else? I was trying to.
That was last week, sorry.
Last week, okay. Uh, well, as long as that community engagement is in the process right now, we're just trying to like do other things at the same time as well.
Understood.
Definitely. The unified government hears a lot from me and from our organization and I can send them this as well.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Haley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Markham. I appreciate it. I did get your, uh, your email and was reading along. And I certainly, uh, wanted to reiterate, um, what our chair, uh, Mulvaney Henry, not Chair Mulvaney Henry just said. We need your advocacy or your insight to also be shared, uh, across the way with the UG. As for, uh, the bifurcation of bills, which I've long, long since advocated, it would clearly delineate, uh, if in fact the UG would decouple or we'd have two separate entities. One consumption driven, um, you know, the electric and or water used by our customers. And that is tax driven, those various line items that the UG puts. So to reiterate, I think the point that, um, um, Chair Mulvaney Henry was making. We need your help. Thank you for the very clear, concise, uh, letter that you and Mr. Martinez have brought to us. We've never needed greater advocacy to have us decoupled. Yeah, I personally favor two bills, you know, that are received and that we only can disconnect for, for consumption driven. If this utility were mine or if the UG were, if, if you don't pay what you've used, then you'll be disconnected. Your taxes can wait a couple of months before there'd be something, but we are the collector. Yeah. We've got to collect it. We've got to pay it the, as the collector. So I just wanted to reiterate that it's being, there's a little bit, it's getting better and better uh, recognized now in part because of your advocacy, but please continue to step up those efforts as you have. And, um, I appreciate your advocacy and, and being here to address that.
And can I just add that we are advocating with the unified government on this issue and many other issues, but, uh, I would, if possible, if this board can share with the public what obstacles or what is the feedback that you are receiving from the unified government so far on this issue, if any, if any discussions are occurring.
Um, I, I will defer to Mr. Johnson on this, however, um, as a collective group, the two organizations have not, have not met to discuss this. Yeah, I'm sure you can imagine that's a pretty large undertaking. There is an effort afoot for that joint meeting to occur in July of this year, which would be the first time that the two bodies have met collectively in total since twenty eleven.
And would that be a public, um, if.
It would have to be a public meeting.
Okay.
That's correct. So I don't have specifics on that yet. They, you obviously, you follow along with both organizations, so you'll know. All right, it'll be noticed properly.
My, I'll put my, a new alert on my, uh, Google alerts for.
Oh, please do.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Haley.
Thank you. Just a brief follow-up because we're talking about disconnects here. I don't know what happened during the other disconnect. I guess the numbers are still out as to how we were affected or disaffected by forestalling the disconnects during the winter, which made a lot better sense with the cold weather rule, but now of course with, you know, the heat coming on. I'd like to know what the ripple effect or the impact was because again, being a pass through, if we did disconnects for non-collection, we still were having to pay, we, the utility, were still having to pay it, you know, to the UG. So I'd be in more inclined, once that data is in, to find out what happened already regarding disconnects before we look at what summer disconnects might be to get kind of a bead on how it affects or disaffects what we're having to do, but I, I certainly support it. But again, it's all, it all goes hand in glove with, you know, having to be the collection agency, if you will, for the.
Definitely would love to see the data and, uh, like I said, I think I mentioned in my letter that I think we've talked about this a lot, all the federal money that's out there currently from the Inflation Reduction Act, from the Infrastructure Act that came out in the last couple of years. And with the Justice Forty Initiative of forty percent of that money needs to go to disaffected communities. When we look at the map that they are using to define disaffected communities, unfortunately, most of Wyandotte County qualifies. So that's an automatic, like, go to the front of the line to apply. You have to, first you have to apply and if you do apply, you're gonna be getting priority on these funds of like, let's distribute some money to help out. There, I think my, uh, a friend of mine, Ty Gorman, comes here a lot and talks about, uh, weatherization and, uh, diversification of energy, uh, amongst other things. So I think these are all avenues to explore. Uh, I appreciate that budget discussions have been open and transparent and I've been listening in from the beginning of the year so that I don't show up at the end of the year without a clue like I did last year because I had just joined the organization and was studying BPU, but I guess as the year is going, let's explore those funds and put them into the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, and that can maybe remedy the lost cost from not collecting for a couple of months now. And I will continue my advocacy on the, and the push against the unified government as well that your citizens are suffering. One of the reasons is this bonding of bills. Let's separate them as soon as possible. I know we need all the commissioners on board. It's gonna be a major thing. It's, I'm a policy guy by nature, so I know that these things, we gotta dot the i's and cross the t's, but as if we're working on it, as this is being worked on, we have to think of how people, other people are in the meantime waiting, suffering or there are consequences, unfortunately. There are real life consequences for a lot of our, uh, fellow community members.
Thank you, Mr. McCarron. Appreciate it.
Rick, is there anyone signing up online?
Yes, sir. We have lines we want.
If you can unmute him, that person and, uh, and the person online, if you can, if you can state your name and address for the record, please, and you have five minutes.
Wow, they're still muted.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. My name is Tassia Mink. You know, I'm E S C C. I live in Wyandotte County. I just had a question, uh, over BPU's, um, budget or income rather. In twenty eighteen, you guys grossed three hundred and fifty-eight million according to your paperwork or according to what you put out online. Um, and twenty twenty-two, you grossed one point nine billion. Um, and, and this is what you guys put out online again. If there's been no raises in our utilities, uh, our utility since twenty eighteen due to a pandemic, how did your income triple? Almost.
Laurie, you wanna give that? Did you, uh, you wanted to repeat it?
I mean, she can read.
Do you want me to repeat the question? I'm sorry.
I don't have twenty eighteen numbers with me, but, uh, I guess if you can repeat the twenty.
Um, I had twenty eighteen numbers. Twenty eighteen number said three hundred and fifty-eight billion, I mean, million with some change on there, you know, I'm just using the, the first three. Um, then on your, uh, the, or twenty twenty-two, this last one, this last one that came out, you had, uh, grossed over a billion dollars. I think it was one point nine billion, but I'm not looking at the paperwork in front of me, but you grossed over a billion. Or very, yeah, over a billion dollars. And I'm trying to find out if we've had no raises in our utility bills and how did your, and you, I, I mean, I don't know if you got that many new customers in Wyandotte County, but I'm just trying to find out how your, how, how did your income grow that much without raising people's bills?
So are you saying one point nine billion?
You, you know the numbers better than I do and I'm telling you that you grossed over a billion dollars in twenty twenty-two. This is according to your paperwork. This is according to your paperwork, uh, on, and you guys have it online. In twenty eighteen, it was three hundred and fifty-eight million with an M. And it was over a billion in twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
This last, this last reporting season.
Um, I don't know.
At the end of last year.
I don't know what line item you're looking at where it states one point nine billion, but I don't have those type of numbers.
Well, after, after. It was seven hundred and sixty-two, I believe, seven hundred and sixty-two million that you all had taken in. And I've talked to you guys about, um, this year's budget once before this year and I want to say it was, um, earlier in the year, around February or January, I spoke to you about what you guys had brought in this year. And after expenditures, it was over seven hundred million. So even if I took out the expenditures, it, it's still doubled. The income doubled. So again, if you haven't gotten a significant amount of new residents or new customers and we have not gotten a raise, how can you explain that? I mean, is somebody cooking the books? Like what's like really going on with the numbers? Because those numbers just don't add up to me.
And I guess all I can say is if you can provide the, the document that you're looking at.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Uh, that will help me understand what numbers you're looking at because those don't translate into the numbers that, uh, that we've presented.
Okay. Um, well, I got them offline. I got them offline and I had, um, I also forwarded them to the SEC, so they had a copy of them. So, I mean, these were the documents that you provided. Now I did understand that you guys had went back and changed it after I spoke with you about it at the, at the earlier meeting. Um, you changed the format in which you put it out there, but it still says just about the same thing that your income had either doubled or tripled from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. But I will get you those paper. I don't have your email personally, um, but I do have Mr. Johnson's email. Um, if I can get your email, I was certainly sending you the paperwork that I'm talking about.
So Ms. Mink, if you can send it to me, then I will, uh, I'll make sure that Lori gets it and I'll make sure that the board also sees our response.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick, is there any, anyone else? All right. All right. So now we'll move into general manager staff reports and since Lori is at the podium, I'll, uh, turn the next, uh, twenty twenty-two annual audit over to her.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. I just want to go back to the title slide first and I'll, I'll speak my verbiage first. So, um, good evening. Um, so here, we're here tonight to, uh, uh, provide for you the twenty twenty-two audit of financial statements and, uh, the supplemental schedules, uh, presentation. So, uh, we have our final results and, um, uh, they were provided to you earlier, um, uh, last week. So with me tonight is Jacob Holman. He is our, the partner from the auditing firm of, uh, Forvis LLP. Um, so after, uh, I go through the highlights, I'll turn it over to Jacob to talk about the year-end audit and, and their process. So just to give you a little background on the timing of the annual audit, we began our audit around the fourth week of March. And over this period of time, we covered a wide range of areas and tested uh, multiple processes which all affect our financial statements. And the audits not only are about reviewing our financial activity and estimates, but are looking at future accounting pronouncements and changes that may impact, um, BPU and how we are preparing for them. Um, I'm gonna start by just giving you an overview of the audit of financial statements that you received and how we ended the year. So, and then, uh, Jacob will talk more in detail behind the footnotes and the audit process. So, um, the audit of finances also are, uh, document that we will then finalize and put together our full, uh, annual comprehensive financial report. And our numbers are then incorporated into the unified government's annual financial report. And the unified government is to be, um, present their, uh, to their commission in the coming months. So, uh, also one other note, once our report is approved, uh, we'll proceed with the preparation of the full annual com- comprehensive financial report for submission into the GFOA, um, for consideration of the certificate of achievement, um, for excellence in financial reporting. That'll be our forty-second year. So a few months ago, uh, we presented to you the preliminary twenty-two, uh, results, um, which were prior to the completion of the audit. So I identified, uh, additional items that still need to be completed. One was the, um, uh, Brushy Creek Coal Retirees Healthcare Actuary Report. Uh, we still had some contract retainings, uh, for our construction projects. Um, any additional accruals for the year and then the implementation of Gatsby eighty-seven, which is, uh, related to leases. And, um, we'll, and I think Jacob will talk a little bit about that implementation. So overall, um, the result, total impact of those changes for a statement of revenues and expenses was a, a reduction of, um, the net position of about six hundred and three thousand is what it netted to. So just to give you a recap of our revenues for twenty twenty-two, um, so we ended the year, uh, with about three hundred and eighty-five, uh, million dollars in revenue. Uh, electric revenue was about three hundred and thirty-two million and water was about fifty-two point eight million. In comparison overall to last year, at this time, we had an overall combined about three hundred and forty-nine million, uh, in revenue. So some of the breakdown of, uh, the, the revenue between customer classes, so residential was above twenty twenty-one uh, by eleven point four million. Our commercial was above by about twenty-one point four million. And then our industrial was up about twelve million on the electric side. On the water side, residential was up on about a hundred and seventy thousand, while commercial was up about six hundred and, uh, sixty-seven thousand. And then our industrial was up about four hundred and ninety thousand. So we did, uh, just a footnote in the left-hand corner there, we recognized the under-collection of the ERC for the third and fourth quarter of fourteen point eight million and we are recognizing that in our January through June, twenty twenty-three financials. The next slide looks at our operating expenses. Um, so overall, uh, combined, we had operating expenses of two hundred and, almost two hundred and eighty million. Uh, electric had two hundred and forty-four million of that and water was about thirty-five point six million. In comparison to twenty twenty-one, uh, we had two hundred and sixty-one million in expenses. Uh, some of the variances there, that our purchase power was above twenty twenty-one levels by nine point four million. Our fuel was up, uh, seven point nine million. Our production was up two and a half million. TND was down about two hundred and seventy. TND was down about two hundred and seventeen thousand, as well as our general administrative was down about two point four million on the electric side. Water had, um, uh, slight reduction in, in, uh, prod, uh, production by about thirty-two thousand. TND was up slightly about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and our general administrative was, uh, down about seven hundred thousand. How it ends, uh, up, our change in net position, uh, in twenty twenty-two was about forty-nine point three million. Um, thirty-eight million of that is the electric side, and eleven point three of that is the water side. Um, in comparison to twenty twenty-one, that was about thirty-four point eight million on a combined basis. And just to, um, result, uh, the, the net changes, um, that were made between preliminary and, um, where we ended up at this point didn't really change our cash position. Uh, so we ended the year with, um, sixty-eight days, uh, cash, about forty-four point, uh, five million in, uh, unrestricted cash. Our debt coverage pi- with pilot, uh, is a combined at two point eight three. Uh, electrics at two point seven three and waters at two point one nine. And then our debt coverage without pilot is on a combined basis of two point one two times with electric at two point oh three and water at one point seven two. So I'll ask for any questions just on the recap of the financials. If not, I'll turn it over to Jacob with, uh, Forvis.
Just one clarification, Lori. Three hundred and eighty-five, the revenues for twenty twenty-two, three hundred and eighty-five million?
Yes.
With an M, right?
M.
Thank you.
M, yes. Okay, Jacob?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present today. Uh, Jacob Holman, a partner here, here with, uh, Forvis, the external audit firm, uh, for the utility. So before I get into my required communication letter, uh, to those charged with governance, I really just want to kind of step back and talk about kind of like a scorecard, uh, how the audit went. Um, today we are in draft form. Uh, we are substantially complete with our audit procedures. Our goal here is to finalize later this week. Uh, but we don't anticipate any major changes with what was presented, um, in this letter or the draft set of the financials, so. To, to get an audit done this size for a public sector entity, uh, by, you see the draft through watermark June second. I think that that's one thing to, to really mention to start with. That's something to be proud of. Uh, a lot of the continuing disclosure requirements and the external third parties really have a hundred and eighty days, uh, requirement. So the end of June, we're really done it with this around the end of May, and really just kind of dotting our i's, uh, for about a week or two. So that's the first thing I really wanted to point out, kind of from a high-level scorecard. Um, the second thing is really just talk about your team. My team has spent significant amount of time, this is about a, a, around a seven hundred hour budget audit process, really starts in the for- fourth quarter, spends a lot of time with your team, uh, in accounting, IT as well as operations, and really just want to let you know that your team was very, uh, very well-prepared. They're very well-trained, and, and they're very polite and courteous to my team. So I definitely want to point that out. I think that that's always, um, something important for the board's perspective. Um, the next thing is audit adjustments. Like Lori said, um, there was no audit adjustments that we found as part of our audit process. There was some, some entries that were just not recorded because they were waiting on third parties, um, as well as we did assist with the adoption of a new accounting standard that we'll talk a little bit, um, today. But nothing that came out of our audit that was unexpected, if that makes sense. Uh, the next thing really just talks about control deficiencies. So in the fourth quarter, we spend a, a, a lot of time really gaining understanding of the control environment for the major transaction cycles, uh, of the utility. Um, in addition to that, we look at the, the board minutes. Uh, we look at your IT control environment. And if anything came out of that that needed to be reported, we would report that today, and, and I just wanted to point out that section is not in here. So there's nothing that we have to, uh, raise to that level to be communicated today. Um, we talked about a new accounting standard. Uh, Lori talked about the, the GFOA. That's a, a, a very, uh, time-consuming process around financial reporting that your financial statements will undergo on an annual basis after we finalize. So that's a several hundred-page checklist that your financial statements is put up against to make sure that your reporting is appropriate. So definitely something to be proud of, um, over forty years in a row to get that certificate, so. I'm gonna go, um, starting on the bottom, where it says bottom of page one, uh, required communications requiring our audit strategy and approach. And really just talk about kind of our standards, the professional standards that we are doing our audit with. And so our audit is performed under what's called, um, generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. So two set of standards. Uh, our goal is to provide a, a assurance within those standards that your financials, um, are materially accurate. So both the face of your financials as well as your footnotes, and, and that your footnotes are complete. So we do audit procedures on every line item on your financials, the statement of net position, your flow statement, as well as your cash flow statement. Uh, we focus on the more material items and do more procedures on those. Uh, we also have a, a strong emphasis on your, your, um, estimates to make sure that the, the estimates are reasonable and there's no management bias. So we'll talk a little bit about some of the estimates in your financials today, um, later in this presentation. Uh, the next page, the only thing I want to highlight really is just the independence paragraph. We take independence, uh, very serious, both, uh, ensuring that we're independent of, of the utility as well as all of the affiliates of the utility. So the pension plan as well as unified government. So I can report with, through that process, we look at that at the beginning of the audit and the end of the audit, and, um, no issues as it relates to independence. The next page, um, GAGIS really refers to what we call a government auditing standards. Um, government auditing standards requires to give an opinion, it's a little different than just a, a generally accepted auditing standard. So, so we give an opinion at the end of the audit around internal controls. So if there was anything that, that needed to be reported, it would be included in that opinion, and, and there is nothing that needs to be reported. So I think that that's good to point out. The next page, page four, talks about, uh, there's several documents that will be included with the audit financial statements when they are finalized. Uh, that other information that includes your transmittal letter, the president's message, your org chart, statistical section, and then that GFOA certificate that Lori talked about. Um, this, this page really talks about what, what kind of procedures we do on all of that information that's included with your audit financials. So we do read those for material inconsistencies, um, ensure that they are not misleading, and would have management fix those, uh, before we finalized. Uh, page five, significant accounting policies. Uh, footnote twelve is a new footnote for the utility. All public sector, um, clients and entities throughout the country really had to adopt a new accounting standard. So this was a very significant accounting standard. Uh, both, it impacted both when you're the less E as well as the less R, and, and, and it was, it was a complicated accounting standard that uh, management spent a lot of time, really probably all the way back to the summer to ensure that they have a complete population of both less E and less R. Once they had that population to ensure that they understood how that accounted for. So high level, if you have, uh, more than a twelve-month lease, um, you really have to present value that and bring it on to your statement of net position or your balance sheet, so. At the conclusion of that, there was seven out there that, that met that criteria, seven leases. Uh, really, these are pole attachment agreements or, uh, tower agreements. Um, seven of those that were present valued and brought on to your statement and that position, uh, for receivable, since you are the less R here. Um, any questions on that new accounting standard? I know that's probably the, the biggest change, but, um, a lot of time management spent on that and, um, to ensure that they, they did that appropriately. So no unusual policies, no alternative accounting treatments. Onto the next page, significant accounting estimates. Uh, listed here are six estimates that we spend a significant amount of time on. Uh, the first is allowance for doubtful accounts. We want to make sure that your accounts receivable are, are, are good, that you're gonna collect those, and that you're gonna collect those in those amounts. Um, we do signi- a significant amount of test on that. We actually confirm with some, uh, some of your larger customers to ensure that they agree with your numbers. Look at subsequent collections, look at write-offs subsequent to your end, um, to make sure that there, that estimate is reasonable. Deferred cost of revenues, that's really, uh, over-under collections of the ERC. Uh, we'll agree all that information back to supporting documentation, make sure that there's no issues with how management collected that, or how they amortize that off during the year. Uh, accrued liabilities, there's several liabilities. The two of them I'll, I'll talk about today, uh, is your self-insurance for healthcare as well as self-insurance for workers' comp. Uh, we look at those estimates, we, we, um, recalculate some of those estimates. Um, look at the lag triangles for healthcare that's provided by your third party to make sure that those estimates are reasonable. Composite rate depreciation, you will, you will notice there was an asset study during the year. Uh, we ensured that that asset study was followed for your depreciation method. Uh, the other two are actuarial in nature, net pension liability or asset, um, as well as your retiree healthcare costs, which is your other post-employment benefit. So we spent a significant amount of time to ensure that the data that goes to the actuaries is good data. So the, the most significant data that goes there is uh, census data and payroll data. So we do a lot of testing to make sure that that's good data. We look at the discount rates and the other, um, information that, uh, management gets to elect in those valuations. Um, use a specialist on the value, uh, on the third-party actuaries to make sure that they're qualified, and that they're using consistent, uh, methodology, uh, year over year. So at the conclusion of looking at all those estimates, uh, we are comfortable that there's no management bias, and the estimation process that management has is consistent and, and a good process, uh, consistent with what we're seeing in the industry. Um, at the bottom, uh, there, there is a new accounting standard that's disclosed in note twelve. If you want to look at the, the impact of what that standard had on your financials, we had to go back and restate the prior years for the adoption of this standard, and it really just shows what that restatement looks like. Um, the bottom of page eight and into page nine, um, there was three, uh, journal entries that uh, we discussed with management, and management decided not to record that both Forvis as well as management believes are, are not material. Uh, so these are not in your financials, um, but they are not material. So the first one is that, that estimate for self-insured healthcare expenses. Our estimation process showed that that was a couple hundred thousand dollars higher than what management recorded, but not overly material to your financials. Um, uh, construction asset, uh, from twenty twenty-one, and then just really just a classification of that pilot, um, on your flow statement, and, and that's a consistent. Um, really, there's two sets of users of your financials that disagree on, on how that should be accounted for. Not a new issue, and, and it really doesn't impact your, uh, net position at all. It's just classification. The bottom of the page, significant issues discussed with management. Um, Gatsby ninety-six is gonna be a new accounting standard, um, that we'll talk about next year. That's, uh, really kind of brother sister to leases. Uh, so management this summer is gonna have to spend a significant amount of time to look at all your software contracts that are out there that are over twelve months. So, um, cloud computing software, if it's over twelve months, again, uh, the professional standard-setting body is gonna have you present value those and put that on your statement and net position, uh, really kind of grossing up your balance sheet just like they did leases. Um, the other one that's out there is we provide some guidance on the Inflation Reduction Act, uh, so management was aware of, of some, some tax credit potential that's out there. Uh, that's really all that I wanted to go over, um, as part of the audit process. Like I said, it was a, it was a good process from, from my perspective. Uh, management was open and honest throughout the process, uh, transparent, and, uh, no major issues or findings that I need to report today. So. Any questions I can help address?
My only question would be, you know, you said that the, uh, the estimating of the, uh, self-insurance
Yeah.
Was, came up about two hundred thousand different, which in the grand scheme of things isn't that much, but was actuals closer to our estimate or closer to the estimate that you would have applied?
So we, we have the, the benefit of hindsight. Um, obviously, we come in several months after a year-end is closed, and so really, our estimate is closer to the actual just because we have that benefit of hindsight. So management has a, a, a good and consistent process. It's just hindsight. When you do have an estimation process, you, you kind of know what actual is two months after you're in for, uh, health insurance. Yep.
My, my question was the reclassification, uh, from a non-transfer or from a non-operating to transfer of, of the pilot, which is a huge amount. I mean, has that not been, or was that not that? I would have thought that, that would appear previously that.
It, it has. Yeah, it's, it's appeared every year I've done the audit.
So now, in so doing, how significant, and you probably said it, I just, I kind of missed it. How significant would that be by that reclassification?
It, it would. So if, if you look at your, and I, I can open it up, if I can try to find it real quick. Um, if, if you look at your, I, I call it income statement, but your statement of revenue, expenses, and changes in net position, it's, 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 uh, printed page thirty on the hard copies. Um, really, all that is, is classification. So your, your change in net position of forty-nine million would not change. Uh, it would still, the pilot would still be its own line item. It's just the section on that statement of where it's presented. There's two users of your financials that disagree on, on where that should be presented, uh, for a pilot.
The ripple effect was it made for a misstatement? It, uh, that was during your misstatement. Wasn't that in your misstatement?
Uh, yeah, so that's what we call our, uh, uh, we call them a pass adjustment. So like, management and Forvis both a, a, agree that it, that it's not accurate. Um, but there's a reason why they did not report it. And, and the big reason was the GFOA, which is a third-party for reporting. They disagree with how it's reported here, or, I mean, they agree with how it's reported here, sorry. And, and management wants to obtain that certificate going forward. Um, accounting standards has a Q and A out there in the implementation guide that says the accounting should be slightly different. And again, the number, um, is the same. The line item, the name of the, of the line item is the same. It's just a transfer goes to line items below that.
Yeah. Thank you. I have a question for procedurally. We used to have the audit every other year, or was the one done every other year? And wasn't it a different? Firm, how has this been done in the past besides this? There's one every other year?
Every year.
Every year, but there's a different.
You want to give the history of our audit firms, Lori, if that's what you're asking?
I am, because I remember there was a discussion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There was a discussion about, uh, I remember when the administration changed, they were requesting that there be audits provided. On what we had done, but we had not, the BPU had not done one. I think for whatever reason, for one year, or it had not been discussed with the unified government.
Make sure we talk about the difference between internal and external auditing to a financial.
I mean, we have done an external audit the last thirty-eight years that I've been doing it. Uh, so we, we've not missed a year, and it's a requirement for us to do every year from an internal audit. I don't know if that's, uh, what you're speaking of, but.
So when we, when, at some point in time, there was a change in administrations, and they were suggesting over at the UG that there be, that the audit information or that there be an audit of what was occurring within the BPU.
The UG would audit us?
Or that there would be one, and then it was informed, it was made known. We've already done the audits, that audits had been done, and it was not always the same firm that was doing that, that there was a different one. That was news to me. So I didn't know this then should, and you said for the last thirty-eight years, wouldn't that have satisfied those very public queries as to whether or not, um, we were operating as to form? Um, I, I, I guess I thought that it had been cleared already because they were being done, you know, one by one firm, one year, and then another one the next year. I just want to make sure that we were in sync with those inquiries that had.
And, and our audits, once we're done with our audit, our information is handed over to the UG, and it's incorporated into their, um, annual report as well. So I mean, there isn't a separate audit process, if that's what you're saying, that the, the UG audits us as well. But, um, our information is included in their report.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. And thank you, sir.
I, I don't know if, if this is what Senator Haley was talking about, but we do put out the bid for, like, what, three years? For auditing?
Five.
Five.
Yeah.
Has it changed in?
No, and we're, we're, this, after we're done here.
We'll go out for a bid again, okay. So for the last five years, Forvis has done it for the last.
Yeah, and the UG, I guess, just won out.
This year for.
This year for theirs.
Okay.
Yep. Great. Any more questions? Okay, so, um, we have a couple resolutions, uh, that I would ask, uh, for you to, um, consider and approve. Resolution number fifty-two eighty-five, I think they were sent, sent to you in separate cover. Uh, fifty-two eighty-five is, uh, for approval of the under-recovery of the energy rate component, or ERC for the third and fourth quarter of twenty twenty-two, and that's in the amount of fourteen million, seven eighty-one, two seventy-four. Um, this will be recovered over the first and second quarters of twenty twenty-three. So what I would ask for approval.
This is Jeff, moved to approve resolution number fifty-two eighty-five.
It's been moved in second. And can I have a roll call please on the approval of resolution number 5285?
Roll call Haley.
Hi.
Myland. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you. The second resolution request is for the approval of the 2022 audited financial statements. And supplemental schedules as presented tonight.
This is Mary. I moved to approve the audit as it was presented.
5286.
5286 resolution.
This is Jeff. Second.
Resolution number 5286 has been moved in second. May I have a roll call, please?
Roll call Haley.
Hi.
Myland.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rick, can you put the agenda up please?
My comment. There you go.
Next item on the agenda, I'll ask Jaren for you to come up and give a operational update on electric supply.
Good evening. Bill and I talked a little bit initially, it was going to be an electric supply quarterly update. I realized we hadn't really recapped. Kind of full circle, the. Event from February of 21 and just wanted to kind of go through. Not that, not that we, any of us want to relive that, but the manual load shed plan. What it means, what it's intended to do. How that event played out, and then also some of the things that we learned internally from the event. And some of the changes that we made and some of the, some of the changes that SPP. From an RTO perspective and, and balancing authority, some of the things that they've, that they've implemented. That are very effective in hedging against something like this happening again. Next slide, please. So really what I'll do is I'll go through kind of high level or load shed plan is what it's intended to do. Talk a little bit about the event that took place and then. Go into lessons learned and then some of the actions. That have been and put in place to protect us going forward. So just high level, there's a couple of ways that a, a load shedding event can, can be initiated. We could do it internally to protect our system, which is very unlikely, especially given the fact that we're in a consolidated balancing authority now. It would have to be something very localized in our system. For example, our. 69 KV loop is internal. To our system and potentially. We may face some voltage issues in the summer. And without, you know, the resources in place to potentially lower that voltage, maybe a worst case scenario would be shedding load. It's, it's extremely unlikely. But just to give you an idea of. What may happen or could happen to where we would have to implement something. Internally, our plans prepare for things like that. We include those provisions and we prepare. Even as unlikely as it would be. The more likely case scenario would be especially in a consolidated balancing authority would be. Initiated by the Southwest Power Pool, which is what we experienced. That's something that we would be responsible for our portion. And, and similar to the way it was carried out in 2021, we would respond accordingly based on the directives that we received from our balancing authority. Next slide, please. Back to 2021. The bouncing authorities' main responsibility is. Ensuring that the, the load is met in its region. And also there are adequate reserves to cover any severe single contingencies that may happen in the system pending any. Events similar to the cold weather event. Specifically in 2021, there were, there were a number of generator outages. Our neighboring RTOs were experiencing similar. Conditions. So we were unable to import as many megawatts as, as we may have wanted to. From a regional perspective to help alleviate some of our challenges. And ultimately, the bouncing authority was unable to, to meet its sole objective, which is to. Serve that load with the available generation and also provide adequate. Reserves. So. February 15th and 16th, February 15th and 16th were the days that had happened. The first day. 1.5% of SPP's total load was shed. And on the 16th, it was a, a little bigger event. I'll get into some of the details of how each day played out and some of the lessons that were learned from each. But six and a half percent of SPP's entire load was shed on, on the 16th. Next slide, please. All of the members in that, in the Southwest Power Pool for both of those events were asked to shed load and it was. It was, it was allocated across the region based on the size of the. Of the member itself. Again, we've talked about the, the generator outages, which was a primary driver. I think one of the biggest challenges was the fact that the. Conditions covered the entire region. So there wasn't really any area of SPP's footprint that. Wasn't facing the same major challenges. So there wasn't really anyone that could be leaned on within the territory to help assist. So. You couple that with the fact that neighboring RTOs were facing similar challenges and it was. It, it was really the, the, the last. The last way to alleviate it. And ultimately that's why it led to a load shed event. Uh, next slide. So internally. When we create our manual load shed plan, one of the. Obvious things we look at first is critical loads. We identify those critical loads associated with public safety. Hospitals, you know, fire stations, police departments, you know, things that. We would need in an emergency event. We exclude those from manual load shed plan. Then we've got some automatic load shed schemes. BPU specifically has some under frequency load shedding. That are built into the system and they're automatic if frequency were to reach a certain threshold. So as you work your way down these. Eliminating factors of circuits. You're left with some available circuits that are then essentially qualified for a manual load shed plan. So. It'll, it'll make a little more sense when I get into some of the challenges that we faced with, but it's, it's not. There, there, there are several that are unavailable to be included. So in the real time, when you're. Looking to respond as quickly as possible and alleviate the, the challenges on the system. It becomes difficult to find the circuits that fit the amounts that we're trying to shed. Yes, sir.
Just, just for clarification, for those who might be listening or, or in the audience. So when you're saying load shed, basically you're saying just. Like stop servicing, stop supplying electricity to either homes or businesses or.
Where it's, it'd be, it's essentially. Like flipping a breaker at your house and, and shutting off the power. We're, we're doing that for. Different areas of our service territory to alleviate and meet the. Requested amount that our balancing authority. Gave us the directive to do. So what, once we've determined. Then what feeders and circuits that we can include in the manual load shed plan. We've, at that point, we've, we've created the plan and. As much as you would like that plan to be static. We learned real time that it must be pretty dynamic. And when I get to the slides where we. Did do the lessons learned, we have tweaked some things and made some changes to eliminate some of the volatility real time and the scrambling, but. It, it's, it's not a perfect science, but I, I do feel like when we get to some of the things that we did, and then also what SPP is doing, it's. It's going to be. Far more protective of, of the system and, and hopefully eliminating things like this to happen again. Next slide, please. Um, on that, that last bullet, one of the things I didn't touch on was. SPP asked that you do it without intentional delay. You know, it, it, one of the things that, one of the challenges that we had. We, with the, with the integrity of the system at stake, we want to make sure we do our part and get the load shed as quickly as possible, but we were kind of fumbling through. As fast as we could. Looking at real time load on certain circuits. And trying to meet and not go over. We don't want to turn any more of our customers off than we have to, but we want to make sure that we meet. The requested amount. And identifying those circuits, meeting the requested amount. It, it takes some time. So there's that difficult balance. So we're, again, that was another driver and on some of the changes that we made, but. You see locally, the first day, one to 2% of our load, and then the second day. Was 7, 8%, which. You know, it lasted three and a half hours. That second day was the big day and we received a. Directive to shed 13 megawatts of load, which is significant when you're talking about residential. Circuits primarily. And. While we were in the process of finding the circuits to open for the 13 megawatts, we received a second. Directive for 13 more. So. 26 total megawatts on our system is a significant piece, especially. When you're trying to avoid some industrial and commercial customers if possible. And that's one of the things as far as that were. You know, impacted. That we hoped that wouldn't be impacted. Not that we want to turn anyone off, but one of the challenges after the fact is when. The CNI customers start calling wanting to know what happened, especially if it impacts. Their day-to-day business and potentially their operations, things like that, those things we want to try to avoid. Next slide, please. So. That, you know, that first bullet, given the magnitude and the amount of megawatts we had to find, unfortunately, there were some circuits that were open that were feeding some industrial customers. We. Were very active in. Trying to make sure that. Those circuits. Aren't a focus or a prior, or I guess one of the first areas that we. Address and manual load shedding that do include. Some of the industrial customers. But the reality is in that situation, there was really no way to avoid it based on. Wanting to rotate people through, not impact the same customers multiple times throughout that day. So you're kind of bouncing around the system and it's, and it's fairly limited. To what we had access to. I talked a little bit about the automatic load shed schemes. One of the things that we did. Was include some of the under frequency circuits. That weren't necessarily in our manual load shed plan, but they were. Residential feeders that we knew we could avoid shutting off. Some of the bigger customers. Expand our. Load area, I guess you could say, to ensure that we, one of our primary objectives was we don't want to shut the same people off twice. We tried to. Spread it across the county as much as possible. So that was one of the things we tried to do real time and, and bringing in some of the under frequency circuits. Gave us a little more room to. To not impact the same customers twice. Real time communication among the departments for being something that is really hard to test. Uh, real time, the groups were very good at. Being composed and maintaining open lines of communication. We have radios, we have phones, we're all on our cell phones, making sure that operations was. Aware what was going on. Key accounts, I was on the phone with Al quite a bit, making sure that. Given him as much notice as we could. It was a difficult situation. It put him in a tough spot, but you know, we wanted to make sure people understood. And there were some, there was some communication that had gone out that week with the. Energy emergency alerts that have been rolling in. I don't think. I don't think there's enough notice you can give to people when it actually happens. I mean, you can make them as aware of this, of the. Situation as possible, but the reality is when it, when it happens. Nobody's fully prepared. Next slide, please. So. We always try to do lesson learned with anything. We. Any event that we have, and this was obviously a big one. So we wanted to make sure that we got with electric operations. Look at circuits. Was there any reconfiguration we could do? Are there some circuits that we had that we use that had some industrial customers on it that maybe we could bring? Or residential in on and avoid some of the CNI customers. That's been an ongoing effort. Electric Ops has done a great job of. Reviewing the feeder schedules and seeing where load is. We've used some of that information to develop some. Additional EMS data functionality. So. What one of our supervisors did, Matt Klein, actually credit to him. He's the one to put this PowerPoint together, but. He built a display on our SCADA system that includes real time. Load readings on the circuits that are in our plan. And then we've also got some real time load readings on some of the. Circuits that are in the under frequency. Load shedding. Piece also that way. We've got real time access. We don't have to go from. One display to the next, hopping around from substation to substation, trying to figure out what circuit we need to open up. So. Having one display that we can see all of the feeders that are. In play essentially. Would save a lot of time and, and that I think would help us minimize the outages that our customers saw, but then also. Allow us to satisfy the directive from the Southwest Power Pool faster. So that was a big thing that we, that we accomplished. And again, Matt and our SCADA team. Put that stuff together, which was great. Industry wide from, you know, NERC to FERC or FERC to NERC and then on down into the RTOs. It's been a real priority for obvious reasons. Some of the regulatory requirements are more focused around cold weather preparedness now. But one of the things that I've seen the Southwest Power, Power Pool do and credit to them, they're, they're very proactive on, on some of the. Changes that they've made. In helping insulate us from similar occurrences, you know, they've, they've increased capacity requirements for. Members. So essentially. Increasing the amount of coverage you would have. To cover your annual peak. So we've got capacity requirements that we have to have a certain percentage. Of, of generation available to cover that peak. They've increased that amount, which will. Add an extra buffer. They've decreased the amount of. Capacity you can count on some renewables. To, as again, help insulate. I guess. Over accounting for available generation when the capacity factor doesn't actually align with what we can actually use. The performance based resource, resource adequacy, you know, in the past. A lot of resource adequacy data may have just been more nameplate. This is what it's rated at. This is what it can do. They've. They're trending now more towards. Performance data. So you said your unit can do this. Now show us over the last, you know, this timeframe. How did it operate? What was its availability? You know, out, whatever, everything from D rates to outages to forced outages to plan. They want to really account for the real capacity for the footprint to ensure that they can. They can be as prepared as possible. One of the things that, that was also key. Is identifying, we, we don't necessarily have any in our load area, but regionally identifying some. Uh, key or critical gas facilities and make sure they're accounted for in, in manual load shed plans across the footprint. You, you don't want to shut the power off to some of the gas facilities that are trying to provide the. Fuel to some of these combustion turbines that were being called on real time. So really fuel assurance policies is a big thing that SPP has been pushing, making sure that. The entities and, and the members that it, it applies to is, is. The entities and and the members that it it applies to is is having policies in place to make sure that you're. Accounting for these other factors that that could impact fuel supply or or things like that. Uh, another thing SPP did. Was um. They they call it the available outage maintenance margin, and what it is, is they have. Assigned a megawatt amount. For every single day of the year. That they will allow. To be an outage, so if they assign. Seven hundred megawatts to. June eighth. Once that number is met, they won't approve any planned outages. For any generators across the footprint, so. They've got those numbers and and they do fluctuate, but for the most part, they have those numbers. Pretty static. In fact, we looked today, so February. And March of next year. They have zeros. They have they have zeros across both months, so which which as of right now. They'll be approving zero planned outages for February and March of two thousand, so. That's that's an added protection, but it's also something that we need to account for with our with our production group. There are things that need to get done, obviously, so I mean, there have been some times where. We've looked at it and planned out and just haven't been approved based on. That margin. Let's see, what else have they done? Oh, just emergency communication plans with members. There's a lot of testing and things like that that are getting performed now. Validating different primary and secondary lines of communication. SPP uses a. Notification system called the RCOM system. That's how they send control rooms, their uh alerts. Uh, we, that's where we receive our. Everything from our uh, any, any ener- energy emergency. Alert and then any escalation above that. So uh, next slide, and I will. Touch a little bit on that, so. You see there that the system operators receive ongoing and refresher training. One of the things SPP does with the RCOM. System is. For six weeks, twice a year, they'll do um. A a manual load shed test. Every Wednesday, so. Will receive a notification on the RCOM system as this, as if it's a real event. And we'll receive a megawatt amount. That we have to shed. Obviously, we're not doing that, but we're going through the steps. We're documenting everything. We're responding as if it was a real. So they do that at least twice a year, so twelve weeks a year, they're doing weekly manual load shed test events, and it gives us. An opportunity to get our manual load shed plan out, review it, look at it, make sure everything's working on the EMS data system, make sure that everything. Aligns with what we expect. And it's good refresher training for the system operators. Uh, policies and procedures are maintained and updated regularly. That's something that that. We do based on a lot of the NERC requirements that impact us anyway, but again, after going through something like that, you want to make sure you're prepared. And uh, it really emphasized the importance. Of. Refresher training and making sure we're up to date and our plans are up to date. And then obviously, the last bullet goes without saying, you know. We prepare as much as possible and and probably more so now. I mean, we were prepared before before and we had everything in place, but. Until the event actually occurs and you're working your way through it, it's. It's a different. Performing the real thing, so we took those lessons learned and we we've kind of dialed in our approach even more. And updated our uh documents and plans accordingly, and it's it's I I I feel like we're better for it. I hope we never have to use it again, but. Uh, the reality is. You know, doing it real time in a real event. Exposes some of the weaknesses that you had and areas for improvement, and we've done that and. You know, again, hopefully it goes and never gets used again, but we we feel like we'll be more ready. If the day ever came than we were the first time, so. That's really everything on the uh presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions and.
I I have a question, Jared, so. You know, we have about forty-eight percent renewables in our. Portfolio, and of that, do we know what percentage of our renewables were either available or online during the? Multiple days of this event?
Yeah, I I I don't have them.
Yeah.
With we 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 absolutely have that data. You know, it's 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 interesting. Uh, I I do think. Again, SPP's. Portfolio, I think, is a little more diverse than some, uh, and I think that benefits us. Obviously, we have a lot of wind. Which is great. When it's blowing. We just, I just sent, I just sent a screenshot to Jeremy yesterday. It's the first time I've ever seen it. We were getting zero megawatts of wind across the entire SPP footprint. We received a um resource advisory. Prices were rapidly increasing. It it that's a significant, I mean, I think there's about forty thousand megawatts of capacity in BP's footprint, and we were getting literally zero. Every e- e- every. Every fuel mix, every renewable piece. Has a place. The reality is when. When circumstances, events, weather. Having that. Security blanket. Of dispatchable energy that we can get online to get the to to serve the load. And provide the the reserves that we need to keep the lights on. It's and and it goes for BPU locally. I feel as diverse as we are, it's a perfect balance. We're we're covered. You know, in theory, it's great. If we if we've if SPP is serving its entire load with wind. Wonderful. I'm I'm on board with that, but I I also think that. There has to be diversity. Um, and we we've seen it. We've seen it play out multiple times. Like I said, that was the first time I'd. Ever seen, and it's it's just, it's one of those. It's one of those things this week. I mean, we've looked every day and it's just, you know, three hundred megawatts, seven hundred megawatts, and when you look, when you think about the capacity. And you think about that number, it's it's almost nothing. It's a huge. Piece of capacity of that SPP counts on that is. It's sometimes it's not there. So and and similar to with with the some of the fossil fuels, we saw one of the drivers for the challenges in February was. The supply for natural gas. I mean, it's obviously that's the highest demand. And i- i- our time of year for for the gas demand and there were some challenges getting gas to some of the. Some of the combustion turbines and things like that, so I mean, it was just one of those deals where. You know, being diverse and having flexibility to dispatch different. Types of generators is what. Allowed us to get through it.
So so my follow-up question on that would be. Would, does the SPP, when looking? At individual utilities on what their. Load shed needs to be, take into consideration what their both portfolio is, or is it basically just kind of like? Everybody's. Going to shed one and a half percent, no matter where you're at.
They look at it based on your load. They're they're. Our portfolio is their portfolio, so they just know what. Fuel mix they have available. They know real time what. Their wind mix is generating. Along with any of the other renewal, but they they know what. Generator mix they have available. And obviously, in a time like that, you know, the economic dispatch becomes secondary. At that point, they're just trying to make sure they have enough. Real power to keep. Keep everyone on online, but. Uh, yeah, it's it the the load shed. Amount is based off of. The member's load, so. It was all proportionate to the size of our load area.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Jared.
So next on the agenda, Patrice, if I can get you to come up. So I believe we're going to present one. Two. Economic development fund requests, so if you want to go in order as they were discussed in the work session.
Thank you. Hello again. Uh, we're here to present. The economic development. Request for Home Field. We discussed it in the workshop and. Now we're here for a vote.
I'm going to wait till the correct one gets up on the screen.
That is not the correct.
Okay, so uh, this request by. Home Field Baseball Complex. Uh, this request was in the amount of two million dollars. Is that correct, Patrice?
Two million, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two point two million. Right, so. Okay. Okay, so uh, I'm.
You want to go through uh committee recommendations and then?
Sure, yeah, the Economic Development Committee of the Board. Um, I don't know what day we met, but it was. At our last, at our last uh, work session. Or before our work session, I guess, and um. The Economic Development Committee. A majority of the economic economic development committee or the entire committee, I guess. Um, the recommendation to the full board was to deny this request. So I'm looking to see if I can get a motion to approve or deny this request from Home Field.
This is Jeff. I move to deny this request.
This is Tom. I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Roll call Haley. Mylan. Malvany Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, Patrice.
Uh, Central Avenue Betterment Association, and their request was economic de- development assistance for sixty thousand dollars. For the purchase of the stables buildings located at thirteen oh three Central Avenue.
Okay, and so uh, similar to the Home Field request, the Economic Development Committee of this board met two weeks ago. Uh, to discuss. Uh, this proposal as well. And what Kaba requested from this board was a grant in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Uh, to assist with uh the purchase and renovation of a property at thirteen oh three Central. So I'll look uh for a motion from the board to approve or deny this request. I'm sorry.
And I did do, for this one, I did do, if it is a motion to approve, um, I did resolution fifty-two eighty-seven, um, which can be put up on the screen. And that is to approve. And you know, obviously, the board can go with either route, but um, it incorporates the. Right, economic development requirements and then. To provide uh VP with free meeting space on at least a quarterly basis.
This is Jeff. I move to approve resolution fifty-two eighty-seven. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Let the record show that uh. This request had been submitted to the UG government first before it came to the UG. I think it's a. Community improvement. They should under cover umbrella with NBRs. Just sponsored by the UG government. They they should have. Port in this whole process and make sure that there is not only great pairs by themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. Uh, I've got a motion to approve uh fifty-two eighty-seven. Um, do I have a second?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Roll call Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Nope.
Malvany Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrice.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous comments. I uh. Have gone over those comments already that I had prepared the work source, rec- excuse me, work session earlier tonight. Uh, so, Madam President, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Uh, comments this evening, Mr. Haley.
Um, just wanted to thank um. Staff for the update on the um, the the two matters that we heard, and um. Beyond that, I have no uh, no further comment.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Mr. Mylan.
My comments are very brief. I'd like to. Uh, let the record show that uh. Lot of bad information came out about. The ability for the board to have. A audit of the operations that we. Were subjected to on a yearly basis. I think the record tonight speaks for itself. To identify, we do have a audit schedule. Identified by the staff and the board. On a regular basis. Let the record show the misinformation. That was. Presented to the UG government was inaccurate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. I guess that's, I'm up. Thank you, Lori, and and to our external auditor for um completing. Uh, the twenty twenty-two financials. Uh, in in record time. I know to some people it doesn't seem like that's record time, but I agree with Jacob that it actually is, so. Um, great job on that. Uh, Jaren, thank you very much for your presentation. I remember you going over some of that data last year. Um, and you you filled in some of the gaps I think we didn't have last year, so thank you for that additional information. Um, I will tell you that I for one am glad that um. That we are part of the Southwest Power Pool and that we are not subjected to the whim of legislators in the state of Texas and ERCOT, so. Um, I just want to throw that out there. Uh, those are my comments for this evening, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you. I I want to thank tonight's presenters for sharing all their vital information. Uh, the presentation about the load shed event. February twenty-one was uh extremely eye-opening. It's a stark reminder that a diverse portfolio of energy sources helps our utility remain nimble. In uncertain circumstances. I'm glad to see staffers taking the experience and use it to refine our processes for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant and Mrs. Gonzalez.
I'd also like to thank everybody that presented and came and offered comments and uh everything for tonight's meeting and. Um, congratulations to Kaylee, who's kind of sitting in a different position and welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Ronan.
Uh, I have no comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lawson?
A five or ten minute break.
Seven, that way over here. We started.
The proposed motion for adoption is as follows. I move that after taking a seven-minute break, the board go into executive session. For thirty minutes to discuss confidential matters related to employment of the general manager. For still a matter of non-elected personnel is justified under the Kansas. Um, Open Meetings Act, and the general manager, William Johnson, and council Angela Lawson be present to participate in the discussion, all others to be dismissed from the room. And electronic and telephonic transmissions to cease, and that. We reconvene in open session, returning to both electronic and telephonic broadcasting at.
Eight oh five.
Eight oh five. To either take action in an open session or to adjourn.
This is Jeff. Move to approve.
It's Mary. I second.
Discussion.
Mr. Haley.
Uh, discussion, I just, again, um, I I for those that are not. On the board that are able to participate in person. I again want to raise the issue. We have the technology available to enable each of our members to attend even by Zoom. Uh, the state, for example, the finance council has met by Zoom. They go into executive session. And um, these matters could be conducted. We have the technology and the ability, and I I just don't like to see anybody excluded who can't physically be present. At that night, I just want to.
Mr. Haley, we are going to take that up at on the board policy discussion. And we discussed it a little bit last week.
Just want to be consistent.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call Haley.
No.
Mylan. Oh, can I interrupt that? Oh, can I interrupt that for a second? Your vote is no to go into executive session?
Well, only because everyone will not be partic, not every member of the board will be able to participate. I'll be able to, but uh, not all of our members are physically able to participate.
Okay.
Okay, Mylan.
We'll move to executive session.
I want to meet.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
That motion carries or on break.
The board has returned uh from executive session.
This is Jeff. Move to adjourn.
I second.
I second.
Motion to adjourn has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Haley.
Aye.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ronan. He's gone. Okay. That motion carries.